Regular meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Could you call the board please?
All right. Sorry, the far end. Mr. Bird.
Present.
Mr. Conick.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Sharp.
Here.
There's Matthew.
Here.
There's Anderson.
Here.
Present.
Okay. Now, the first item is going to be to adopt the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, modifications?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wrote to you in, I think at our last meeting, we got this opinion letter from the Street of Information Act Council, and we, you weren't here. You were at the beach. You were smart.
Right.
So, I thought the board unanimously agreed to basically table it until this month so you could participate in the discussion.
So I've got a section for legal opinions. We can just put it in there if that's what you want.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
And I guess that, and that's covered, that, I guess will encompass what we're going to do about the issues relating to the permits that were issued at the meetings that they said were properly noted, right?
Could be, yes.
Well, that would be my...
Okay.
And the other thing is, I don't know what you want to do about it, but it doesn't appear to me that this number-one item on here was, well, it was noticed all right for us, but it wasn't noticed to the planning commission. So, it wasn't noticed properly in May, and it wasn't noticed at all this time.
Why don't we just do that when we get to that one?
Okay.
Or anything else?
I think it was.
I was going to suggest that we move that application, the, how do you say that?
Henzel Stone.
Henzel Stone.
Henzel Stone.
Henzel Stone Estates to the, make it the third item, just because the other two, I think, are relatively uncomplicated. And the other thing was, there's the, we have this closed session, which I think would not take very long, and we have our attorney who is going to bring it to us. So I was going to suggest we do that first, and then we can go into that little room over there, the grand jury room. We don't have to inconvenience anybody. It won't take very long.
Except that there's a level curfew.
Right. But that's...
Yeah, but it's costing money to have him sit there.
Yeah.
So you're going to be inconvenienced one way or the other.
We won't be taking it very long. So I was going to suggest that. If we wanted to incorporate those changes with Mr. Conick's suggestions.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So now to, okay, the purpose of this closed session, I promise it won't take long, is that we have a, and I don't know what you call it, lawsuit or legal appeal, between Mr. Conick and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I think we have reached a settlement. Is that your understanding?
I don't know. I haven't been to the meeting yet.
No, no, it's not, no.
Oh, so...
You've been working on it.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. So we were going to go into closed session for just a few minutes to verify that and decide what we're going to do. So I think we need a motion.
And to be clear, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry for just talking on the peanut calorie.
Oh, you can...
The final decision of what to do will be made out here, but there may be matters of explanation that may be more appropriate to close session.
And this is Mike Lockaby, who has been advising us on this, the board, on this matter, so...
I make such a motion? What's a, what motion? To adjourn into the...
Closed session.
Closed session in the, whatever it is, hearing room.
For the purpose of...
For the purpose of learning what we need to learn from our council.
And we also need to have a section number, which I believe would be Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711 subsection A7.
That's what I was about to say.
For the purpose of discussion of actual or probable litigation.
What kind of litigation?
Actual or probable. It is still actual, right?
I guess.
Okay, so did, was that your motion?
That was my motion. Oh, yeah. That's what he said. Word for word.
Okay. Is there a, is there a second?
I'll second. Do we need to sign anything?
No.
Okay.
All in favor?
We're going to have, ask for discussion then.
I don't think so.
I think you should.
No.
What do you mean, no?
No.
Well, I object. Point of order, you can't pass a motion and have no discussion.
Oh, with you? I thought you made the, you made the motion.
He made the motion.
Okay.
I just want to point out to the board that, that the basis of going into executive session, but if it is pending litigation, is if the discussion would somehow prejudice the position of the board if it was discussed or disclosed in public. And I don't think that's the case here. So I will oppose the motion. I think we would do it right out in public.
But you don't even know what we're doing.
I know what we're doing.
Okay. Now, does everybody agree with that, and you're making them?
Well, I...
You're just objecting.
I'm just telling you, that's my comment, and I think that, you know, it's up to the discretion of the board. You do not have, you don't have to do it in executive session. It's optional to go into executive session, even if it is a legal matter, and even if it does involve pending litigation. And since the litigation's not going to be pending until morning by another 10 minutes, I don't see why we can't just go over whatever it is one time instead of doing it back there and then you've got to come out and do it again. So let's just do it. This time will be a secret for another five minutes, and I don't think there's any point to go into executive session.
So you were definitely in agreement with this proposal that were being presented?
Yeah.
And so you're in a settlement?
Yeah, I'm in a settlement.
Tonight?
Tonight. Assuming the board, the job's not on...
I'd still like to go into executive session with Mr. Lockaby.
Okay.
For a few moments.
Okay, we'll keep it short. If we both vote...
Vote.
Well, is there, hold on, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I want to disclose, if it's not already apparent, from what was said, that I'm a party for the litigation, just like everybody else. So, but as I understand, the conflict rules, that by itself doesn't disqualify me. And so, but I am going to make that disclosure, and vote no.
And are you going to join us?
Not sure.
Okay. I guess we'll go ahead then. Okay. We'll keep it short.
That was close. Close, maybe five.
Good job, you're going to win that way.
Yeah.
Don't you say, what you have, how old section was it? 2.23711A7.
Okay, I'm going to call the meeting back to order if that's necessary. Okay, so we just are coming out of closed session, and I need a motion.
Yeah, certification.
A certificat, certification of what we discussed in the closed session.
All right, I'm, I, well, I don't know, I'm supposed to be writing, but anyways, I have moved that we certify that the only business that we discussed during the closed session was what was stated so eloquently by Mr. Bird in his motion, namely, legal matters regarding pending litigation pursuant to section 2.2-3711 subsection A7 of the Code of Virginia.
Okay. Have, do we do a roll call? Can we certify?
You do.
Okay. Chris, can you make that certification?
I can.
David?
Obviously, yes, sir.
I can.
I can make it. Fine.
Okay.
We'll have it done.
Bill?
Okay.
So we've made the certification. Now, the result of this is, okay, so we have had a appeal of an action law, so it's been a matter of a court hearing or a court case, and we have reached a conclusion and an agreement with Mr. Conick. And so the result of this is we have a resolution which authorizes us as board enter into this agreement. We will make this resolution, and then this, the agreement will be attached, and Mr. Conick will sign that agreement. And I'm thinking, Mike, could you just briefly explain what the agreement is of?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
The agreement very simply is releasing all claims by either party against the other with respect to the pending litigation or litigation upon which that itself was based, all of which goes back to, was fundamentally a question of both notice and the right to hearing. The question is whether, under Virginia state law, a Board of Zoning Appeals is required on a, an appeal of zoning administrator determination. Now, with respect to interpretation of the zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator is authorized to issue binding determinations under certain circumstances. Those binding determinations may be appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. When those decisions are appealed to the Board of Zoning Appeals, state statutory law is unclear as to whether or not the only parties who are able to be heard are the zoning administrator as the administrative officer and the appellant, and perhaps another party who had been, had joined formally by filing papers with the VZA to become a formal party, or whether it's also required to have what's called a public hearing, basically to broadcast to the entire world, you're allowed to come to this hearing. After we've heard the party speak, then we'll have anybody from the public who had, who is interested in speaking, you can get up and speak for a defined period of time. It is quite unclear on that. And this had resulted in some animosity, the differences on this issue have resulted in some animosity between Mr. Conick and the other members of the Board of Zoning Appeals, as well as some other county staff. It's a long story that doesn't really need to be rehashed here. But the short and long of it is that we're settling all of that litigation, and we are going to request the county attorney to request the Attorney General of Virginia to issue an opinion on this particular matter. And both Mr. Conick and I believe that it is, it is an unclear area of the law. We both have an opinion on how it probably works out, but we also have some ideas about what some other people think it would be. The Attorney General of Virginia is empowered by state law to issue advisory opinions, and these advisory opinions have some weight in the law. They do not have the weight of a court ruling. However, they do have strong weight if you ever do go to court. And they also represent the opinion of somebody who is providing a published opinion to all the people of the Commonwealth. And given the amount of difficulty that we have had here, and also the research that both Mr. Conick and I have done, this is done differently in different places, and it probably shouldn't be. And it would be nice if we knew what the right answer was. And so both as a service to us here and a service to the Commonwealth, we're going to ask Mr. Goff, who has agreed to do so, to request the Attorney General to issue an opinion to us using his vast legal research resources, by which we have agreed to abide. And I think that that's roughly the short and long of it. Would you agree with mine?
Okay. Chris, are you going to add?
I would only add two things. The first thing is, there certainly hasn't been any animosity on my part. I think it's a question of law, of whether or not people have a right to be heard. And I also don't really agree that the law is unclear. I think the law's perfectly clear, but see what the Attorney General says, and that's what I have agreed to do on my part, rather than have the court rule on it. We're going to have the Attorney General issue an opinion and agree to abide by his opinion. So other than that, I don't have anything else to say. Thank you.
The other, the other point would be that any, any sessions that we had for appeals or variances or applications, the public is always there. It was that in this, the public could be there, but was not, would not be allowed to speak. And so that is what's going to be answered by the Attorney General.
Correct.
Both of you.
Okay. So that's, so we, there's nothing that we do except in closed session that's not seen by the public and by the scene of the media.
Okay. Is there anything else on the board? Okay. So we, do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I will make that motion to adopt the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Not to, not to be particularly difficult, but it might be best, I'm not certain, Matthews, that you have, that you have a conflict under the law, nor am I certain that Mr. Conick does, but it may be for the best if both of you abstain. And that is merely, that's not necessarily legal advice, that's just for the best in terms of the best appearances for the public, since you are both more effective than the rest of the group.
Okay, but she's not involved in this case.
She would be a signatory, however, to the settlement agreement.
Okay, but she wasn't a party to the case.
The settlement releases, the provisions of the settlement, in addition to what has already been said, she releases and it gets released, so, from many claims, so individually, so...
Well, you are abstaining.
So therefore, that's...
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Ms., Dr. Matthews is going to abstain.
I'm also going to abstain.
And Mr. Conick is going to abstain. Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Okay, so the resolution passes. Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't know why you're congratulating me. Congratulations to you.
Do you have that signed off on?
I signed one copy, so...
Okay.
This is the, this is the settlement, and this is the resolution.
How does he sign it?
You'll have to sign one, and then we'll, he'll send me the thing, and I'll give it to Art, if you want it. And he signs the letter. He says he will.
Who's that? Art, okay.
Do we sign this in addition to Matthew's?
Uh, yeah.
For the initial, not there.
So, and the motion has now passed.
Resolution?
Or, yes. So I believe the chairman should sign on behalf of the board. And you have, this is the resolution.
You only have one, so we can do the...
And you'll hold on to that for the original record and provide the...
He didn't make a...
I don't have a last copy. That was my copy there.
This copy of the agreement?
Yeah, I want to have one.
Yep.
Can you make a further copy of it tonight?
Well, didn't you bring them?
I have several copies.
Well, we can do that.
Okay.
Just a little.
Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it.
I mean, I want to have one fully...
Yep. I'm sure that this is exactly what y'all came here for.
Great. You know what they say, folks, there's three things you shouldn't, or two things you should never watch, be in there with sausage and all.
As a symbol, we sign this on this, is that the order?
Well, the order will go in the way to the party. We're going to print clean. So which is mine, right?
Yep.
So it'll be only time to go, right? Breakfast.
I'm glad that you guys moved us up to the front of the, turn two last week.
You're shooting a lot of...
Nice to see you.
Pretty spicy.
Good.
Okay.
Do we go with the rest of them?
Well, we can talk about the meeting minutes unless you want to shift that to the...
What, Roger? I didn't see you.
Now, what, Jennifer's got a little report on what we've got done.
We have most of the meeting minutes done. I don't know if it's a line meeting.
They don't...
Yeah, if you walk, the only apartments, essentially, for people that are looking, just Matthews. These three have to sign lots of places.
Okay.
Just have to sign the main thing. I think we are. Here is an original copy, which is for the VZA records. If you will scan me a copy first thing tomorrow morning, I'd appreciate it. And I will submit the signed order to Art.
Yeah, okay.
Probably tomorrow afternoon. I'll submit the consent to three of Art.
Either way.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to serve you all.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so next item, just briefly, we've been, with the recent changes in our staff and everything, we've been behind in meeting minutes, but we've made efforts between Mariah's meeting and this one to summarize what we need, and I think we've got all the two minutes done, which we will submit to the board and maybe put it on board notes shortly, so that they can be reviewed by the next meeting.
I want to thank, I have Brenda thank Lauren May, because she did a very good job in sorting, pulling these things out of the files, and many of them were done. The meeting of August 24th, 2016 is also done. May 24th, 2017 was a short meeting, and Mr. Sharp is going to get that done. And then July 26th, 2017 is going to be done by the secretary. And so those, I think, so it's two meeting minutes that were missing, and everything else is accounted for and is completed. Of course, they were done, they just hadn't been distributed, except for...
So we'll make those all.
Okay. One other thing, because David, the other David, asked me, and I sorted out...
Who else? Who is the other David?
The new David, so you remember.
Okay.
The young, the young dad.
David the younger.
So, and that's about our rules of procedure, which we amended like last April, April of 2016. But apparently, after we voted on it, somebody never issued another clean copy of it, there's the changes that were made. So we're going to get that done, because people are supposed to be able to look at it when they go to the zoning office. That's the thing.
We have a copy pending.
Well, we have a copy pending. It's my understanding was that Peter Luke wants to look over it, and it's gotten sidetracked. And so it is, I believe it's in Art's office someplace, and so when he finishes with that, then we will get it...
And serve it.
And circulate it.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else?
Well, I just noticed some other thing I forgot to put on, and that's our application forms, that, which I had asked to be put on.
Okay, I, I think, what are you asking that the...
Well, if we can't do it tonight, we've got a lot of visits, I don't want to hold these people up anymore, but can we put it on the agenda for maybe next month?
And that's our application for...
To re-go over the application forms, which are the same application forms that we've been using since I was zoning administrator, and they really need to be updated, and I made some suggestions to everybody.
And that may be part of the procedure, so that's a big...
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and look at, I mean, I've got Fairfax's and Warrenton's or Falkir's and, you know.
Okay.
I think we resolve a lot of issues we've had, a lot of issues the planning commission has had, because they don't have, well, they have incomplete, because the application doesn't really call for it. So that would clean up a lot of problems and continuances and so forth.
Okay.
All right, maybe we can put that on next month again?
Yes, yes.
All right, great.
I think now we're ready to get into the applications. And since we're going to do the Henzel Stone third, the first one will be Rigel, Whitzel, Aubrey, and Andrew Silver family apartment. Are the applicants here?
Yes.
Are you here to represent the applicant?
I am, yeah.
Okay, would you come forward?
Sure.
I don't know. Do you see need a chair to sit down?
Yeah, we could choose.
Do you want to grab a chair?
Sure, right here.
And at the Board of Zoning Appeals, we swear you, so do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Grab your seat.
Pulling one up since you put your papers on.
If you would introduce yourself and tell us what you're...
My name is Rigel Whitzel. My wife and I and my brother-in-law bought our house at Forty Mattix Lane over in Amistville with the intention of finishing our basement so that our mother, my mother-in-law, their mother, can move in with us, and we can have a place where we can take care of her. She has MS. So she's living by herself right now, but we don't, we want to have her place and our place together right there in the same year.
And how many square feet is that?
Downstairs, I believe it's 11 and some change, just under the 1,200 foot.
And it has its own...
It does, yes.
Is there anything else to add?
No, we're just trying to put it in the kitchen. We want to get it done as soon as possible so that we can be ready for her when, we don't know if she's going to need to move in with us in the next few months, next few years, but we want to get it finished and done.
Okay. Is it, was there something from the planning commission on this?
The planning commission heard the application and approved it.
Recommended.
Recommendation. And recommended, yeah.
So no controversy?
No controversy at all. The only controversy was Mr. Brown didn't think it needed a special use permit.
Okay.
Well, because it was in the same house.
Oh, that's one, okay. Yeah, I saw this, I saw this.
So there was some discussion then, but they decided it has its own kitchen and it's got a separate entry, so that's...
So that was...
But anyway. Other than that, it works.
It's within 200 feet.
Yeah, obviously.
Okay. Is it any other information? I mean, got a letter or something?
Yeah, I'm going to...
No, it's not, Mitch has signed it.
Yeah, I see, we got two from the health department.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to open the public hearing now. Is it anybody who'd like to speak on this application? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the board's question?
I move to approve it, well, I move to make all the findings that have to be made pursuant to section 17052.
So the general standards?
General standards, and then as far as I can see, it meets all the other standards, so I make motion that we make those findings and approve the application as filed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. There were no other stipulations from the planning commission that I know?
Nope.
Call back.
And so just as a matter of interest, it's automatically subject to the health department approval because they need...
Right.
And they've got that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Okay, the next application is the David and Beardo Thornhill family apartment. You can grab another chair if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm swearing you both in together, so. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay. Grab a seat. You can pull up if you want. So if you introduce yourselves and then just tell us, are you pretty much in the lobby back there?
Um, Beardo Thornhill's...
And Dave.
They want to go.
Okay.
We've been here for 30 years. We have a farm that we built, and we built a house. We've been here for 30 years. We built a barn, and we built a house. It's a bank barn, it's the only place where you could put the barn because of its power. And my son has moved back to the county with his wife, and he wanted to put an apartment in the barn for them, so... for them, so we've been buying as long as they want to.
We need all the stipulations except that we're further than 200 feet because of the way of the land. And, uh, that's why we're here for this special exception.
Well, a special use term?
Special use, yes. We need all the other factors. So, we, you can walk pictures and all.
No, we haven't.
Yeah, I've seen.
Of course, Alex has been there, I think. It's just.
On the pro flat, probably 200, about a.
Yeah, right, about a foot, it is.
And so it's less than 1,200 square feet in total, its own building.
Right, and we're not making any additions to the, it's, you know, it is what it is.
Okay.
This horse still lives down in the basement.
Okay. And, now, it's my understanding that if it's an existing structure, it's not necessary for it to be less 200 feet or less from the main building, from the main.
What's the basis of that?
Are you reading it or what?
This is from the additional standards. Such use may be a separate building constructed specifically, well, for excluding renovation of existing structures, no such family apartment shall be more than 200 feet from the main.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just, I mean, I'm familiar with the property, and, uh, I, frankly, I wasn't aware that it's in there, but if it's an existing building, I think that's a good idea, and I'm just going to recommend that after this is over, we tell Mr. Berg to go to the planning commission and look into that, because I think when it is an existing structure, we ought to encourage people to make that kind of a use of it without building a whole new thing.
Or subdivide it to it.
Or, or it's subdivided. Exactly, so, uh, anyway, but, but this, I think, meets the criteria because of it, because of the topology, and there's kind of no spot there where they clearly couldn't build it there anyway, any closer to what it is.
Okay.
So I would move to make that finding, and, I mean, well, I guess we're in a public hearing, I mean, I think.
Yeah, we may do the public hearing.
Did you want to know the number? It's 170. 62-G.
Can you find that in the documents itself?
Right there it is.
So it does apply, so I don't think we have to make a translation.
All right, wait, 62?
170-62-G.
There it is. So it doesn't apply anyway, great.
So we're going to release them that regard. Okay. Planning commission?
Planning commission.
Yes.
Yes, we will, I will bring it up to the planning. No, we have to do.
No, no, I'm sorry, the recommendation.
Oh, they, they recommended it, uh, unanimously.
Okay, no, it's not objection.
No objection, all right.
Okay, is there any other questions from the board? No, okay, I'm going to open the public hearing right now. Is it anybody who would like to speak on this application? Okay, there being none, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the pleasure?
I make a motion to approve it, subject to the, um, conditions, which are, you know, are there, and the health department approval, and I make a motion, coincidentally, together with that, that we make all the required findings in Section 170-52, the order.
And the 170-62-G.
Well, they just, they apply.
The additional standards. Um, is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
You have to play anything you're building up to.
He'll give you a permit, and he has to go to David, and he gives you the special use permit sign, and then you take that and build it up. I told you not to be there.
Okay.
I told you not to be there.
Okay, so the next item is the Hensel Stone Estates LLC, and you're here, you come forward. And you are?
Berkeley Von Von.
Berkeley Von Von, okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Okay, grab a seat. And you can tell us what you're planning to do.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, before she gets started on this, because I don't know what the board, what the board's pledge is, but I want to make a point of order, and that is that I don't believe that this can be heard tonight because it wasn't properly noticed, it wasn't properly noticed, uh, to be heard at the planning commission level. Uh, we went, I don't know that we really discussed it in our May meeting, but it was on the agenda. And, uh, as my understanding at that time was that, uh, Section 15.22204 of the Code of Virginia and our own zoning ordinance require that before we have a hearing, it has to be heard by the planning commission, and that before the planning commission hearing, the planning commission has to give a notice to all the neighbors of adjoining properties. And this is kind of an unusual case because it sits right on the county line, and no notices were given to the adjacent landowners over in Culpeper, and the state law is very clear that they have to be notified. The other requirement is that the county administrator of the adjoining county has to be notified at least 10 days before the hearing at the planning commission. So neither of those two requirements were met, and that's why it wasn't, we didn't hear it, uh, at, at our May meeting. Now, the planning commission did have a hearing at its May meeting, and, uh, but it wasn't properly noticed, so it's invalid. And our zoning ordinance is very clear that before, that before we hear it, it has to go to the planning commission to have a valid hearing, so I don't, I mean, I really don't know, and I think it's maybe an academic question of whether anybody from Culpeper is going to come and want to be heard, or whether the county administrator from Culpeper, who I don't see here tonight, wants to be heard, but I don't, my concern is that if we hear this tonight, because the statutory notice provisions have not been complied with, and because there's case law that says if you don't comply with the notice requirements, it's an invalid permit, I don't want to get the board, and I don't think the board should get itself in the position of giving somebody a permit that may not be valid, because somebody could bring that up and challenge it at some future time. It's true they have to do within 30 days and so forth and so on, but I just think what somebody else is going to do, or whether or not they want to do it, or can do it, or might do it, it's not our concern. I think our business is or ought to be to follow the law and make sure that, as they say, all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and they're not crossed or dotted in this case. So I would respectfully suggest, and I want to apologize to the applicant, because I know this is the second time that this has happened, and it doesn't matter whose fault it is, but the, what I would suggest is that we continue the, the public hearing, uh, until, I guess, next month, and then have the planning commission re-advertise it for its hearing.
Could I, before we go there, I was just going to answer your thing. I believe you are incorrect about what you just stated.
In what begun?
In a couple of different ways. One is, the Culpeper County has been noticed by the county administrator.
You have noticed of this meeting, not of the planning.
Of this meeting, yes, exactly, exactly.
If you read the code, it says that they have the planning commission.
No, 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 it says, or its representative. He is, he is its representative.
I know, but yes, they have to be notified of the planning commission meeting.
Of the meeting, no, it says the commission will note, or its representative will notify the county next door prior to the meeting. Now, it doesn't say the.
Did our God come in here?
It doesn't tell, no, we've got a couple of opinions.
Well, anyway.
And yes, our God did.
All I'm saying is, I think you ought to be, play it safe and do the right thing.
No, the other thing is, you're reading a 15.2-2204. You drew, from the one paragraph, you drew these, the application from a different paragraph. So you did not draw the correct result.
I don't know what you're talking about by that.
Because one paragraph covers this event, but it did not have the conclusion that you said. That conclusion is in another paragraph, the notice requirement of the adjoining landowners. I'm telling you, that's what happened. Is that not the case?
But the, but the adjoining landowners would never notify.
They don't.
I beg your pardon, they certainly do have to be, and there's case law. Well, I think you ought to get an opinion from the county.
We've got an opinion.
Well, where is it?
So you're wrong.
Well, we'll see if I'm wrong.
And the thing is, I mean, my objection to this is that Mr. Conick does come up with a lot of opinions, a lot of them are wrong, and we have to put the applicant to a great inconvenience because of their wrong opinion.
Well, I don't know if it's wrong or not.
I know you don't know if it's wrong or not, but that's the problem.
And you certainly don't know if it's wrong or not.
And, um, the notice issue is something that he's been focusing on, and I understand that notice is important, but in this case.
What's this?
I don't know, that's the section.
It's a paper that's signed by anybody with something on it.
It's the section of the laws.
Well.
The problem with the abundance of caution that you suggest is, you're not correct.
This is, this isn't the law, this is some, somebody wrote something here that's a discussion on the law.
From Mr. Gough, from Mr. Gough.
Well, it's not signed, it's not, it's not even an email, it's not.
See, this is another subject that we're going to talk about tonight, is this idea of opinions, how we handle it and so forth, and you're not our turn.
I never said that, I was. Well, that's my view of it, you all can do what you like.
Okay.
And, uh, my suggestion is to get a formal opinion that says what was done was right, it wasn't. If it, if it was done in accordance with what you're saying, then I don't understand why it wasn't heard in May. It was taken off the, it was taken off the agenda in May after Art reviewed the whole thing and told you to take it off, and you conceded that that was a correct reading of the law in May. So now you're changing your mind, Alex.
Hold on, hold on, no, this came up.
Wait a minute, do you stop cutting me off before I'm finished talking, it's really rude, and I'm really getting tired of it. Thank you. You, you took it off the agenda in May, and you wrote me an email and said, "Savor your victory", and I wrote back to you and said, "It's no victory, it's just unfortunate that that's what happened, it wasn't properly noticed". And it still was never properly noticed because the notice has to go out before the planning commission meeting, not about this board, this board, it's usually the same notice that goes out, but it has to go out a certain number of days before the planning commission meeting, five days, to the neighbors. That's what we've always done, that's what state law requires, it says so in state law, not this law. It refers back to this law, and it says you have to give notice. I'm just telling you what it says in the, in the section on special use and special exception permits. That's number one. Number two, it says that 10 days before the planning commission meeting.
No, it's not.
I beg your pardon, well, read it, it's right in there. It says 10 days before, and stop interrupting me, that's what it says. 2204C says, "In addition to the advertising and written notification required by this section, written notice shall be given by the local commission or its representative at least 10 days before the hearing". And it says, "The hearing before the planning commission" in the previous section. I'm reading the code, you're reading some email from somebody.
This says when a proposed comprehensive plan or amendment.
I know that's what it says, Alex. If you would listen, you would know, and if you would read it, you would see that the other sections refer back to this and say, "That's what you have to do, even if it's a special exception permit".
There's another section that refers to.
I don't have it with me, it's, it's 15.223, somewhere up there.
Okay, well, the point, my point is, I feel like we're fully a, able to hear this this evening. That's my point of view.
Well, I move that we continue. I move that we have, send it back to the planning commission and get them to rule, to have their hearing, and do it right. That's my motion.
Now, there is, there is one other thing that I was going to suggest, is if there is any issue with the planning commission, we do have 170-55D, which says, "Any time when specified by this section may be waived by agreement between the issuing authority, who may act through the zoning administrator, and the applicant or applicant's agent". And I'm suggesting, just to be on the safe side, we would ask the, out of an abundance of caution, that we ask the owner to.
How can the owner waive notice to the neighbors?
It says right here, the time, no, this is a different.
That's just ridiculous, Alex.
This is a different issue.
It's just ridiculous.
But anyway, if we're going to do it, I would suggest we do that. And I don't know if this has anybody feeling able to continue, but I think that's what we should do.
I think in the absence of any notice from any aggrieved parties in the situation, that we ought to continue and not throw any further obstructions and inconveniences at the applicant. But how do you know that, if they weren't properly noticed?
Well.
This has been on the docket for three months. It hasn't since May. It hasn't been on the docket, it was on the docket, and they took it off the agenda, and the meeting was canceled. And then they re-advertised it for tonight in the paper. It never went to the planning commission again. It never went to the planning commission in a, in a regular way at any time.
Chris, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay. Is there a second to Chris's motion, go ahead, you're at the seat. I'll second that. Is there further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
No, I'd like to submit this for the record, to the secretary.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the motion passes, we're going to go ahead, you're at the seat. Okay, so would you tell us what you're planning to do?
Yes, um, thank you, I, it was not my intention to create a complication for anybody, um, so.
It's not your fault. Don't let it, that splash on you.
I, I did, um, actually, um, take the, um, comments that I have heard from neighbors. I invited actually all of my neighbors in Culpeper and in Ratlinhead County to my house to come see, I gave a letter of explanation of what we want to do. We've lived, um, at this farm over the past 20 years, we raise our children there, we have bonded ourselves. Our work calls us away, we have three children who we see possibly won't, with continuity, ever live at the farm, and so looking to keep the farm in our family and as a farm. We tried to come up with a, a plan of what to do with it, so that it can stay farm, rural, and stay in our family, and create some income. And what we came up with was a tourist home, um, our farm office, and our, um, office is going to remain in the blockout basement of the home. The tourist home would be in the living quarter to first and second floor. Um, it's in the middle of the farm, which is, um, well, this parcel is 100 and some odd, 170 something acres, the whole farm is 222. Um, uh, the concerns I think that our neighbors had are fireworks, which are not going to be allowed, and any of these things I'm happy to put in writing as part of the agreement, um, also to be carried forward to whatever owner is going to come next, if we ever sell it, no, new, um, uh, AT, you know, like loud ATVs going around, no motorcycles, nothing that is going to jeopardize the rural, quiet quality of this farm. Um, we aren't putting any lights out that are going to affect the night sky.
No neon lights for?
No neon lights, nothing like that, no. I mean, we really want to try to make the state a farm, we have a very close relationship with quite a few of our neighbors who we think coming to this farm, their generations helping with the farm, they're as much a part of this farm as we are, they are continuing to help us with our cows and, um, and other animals that are there. And anyway, so this is what we're asking for, and, um, I, I feel, um, I feel that this would be the best use for this property, um, and that, I hope, it will need approval.
So you're doing events as well, and that's a separate?
That's a separate.
That is a separate request, and, well, let's say, only that, and nothing else.
Right, no, that's fine.
Nothing else, yeah. But this is tourist home, this is separate. But this is tourist home, this is separate.
So I saw in the application that five business.
Yes.
And no more than ten guests at a time.
That's correct.
And then how long do you anticipate, do you think that they would take, that it would take this for? A weekend, a week?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't think it would be, it's not even long term. I think it's a month or more. I don't see that. I see it being somebody coming out to have a rural quiet farm experience and then to home. So a weekend, a week, something like this, yeah.
But not longer than a month?
Uh, no, I don't anticipate that at all, no. And the other thing is, we will always have somebody on call available either near the property or by phone that the guests could contact. So it's not like, you know, that we're leaving this property alone and people can come and go, right? Exactly, yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And properly insured and.
And the planning commission was, they heard a couple of months ago. He would have called them.
I don't call them.
It was brought in late too.
As proposed by applicant.
Okay, so the planning commission unanimously had recommended approval of this application. When it was brought before down, when was that, in April? In April.
May.
In May, okay.
The date of application was in April, I guess that was in there.
Okay.
I think the thing that maybe made the neighbors feel more comfortable is that it is a requirement to writing about.
What you did. And those are as you proposed and where are those on our, in, in?
Some of them are in the, to the application, and I can, they were actually discussed at that meeting.
Okay.
And I can provide.
Do I see what the planning commission?
There should be. The follow-up, does it have anything else?
So in that, I can provide a list of them at any time.
Okay.
But I can't make it right now, it would be helpful.
Well, who wrote this? Who wrote, "As proposed by applicant"?
That would be a big problem. Right?
Well, you know, what does it mean? As proposed by applicant. We don't have anything in writing. But how do you know that's the same thing that the planning commission?
Well, we'll look at it and.
Is it the same, actually, that it was part of this application?
So it's the things that are in the letter, then you don't have to write them again if it's in the letter? I just want to make sure there's a reference to what they are.
Well, just to make sure, I don't take anybody's time.
No, it's okay.
Um, so.
Okay, is it?
I mean, I don't, while she's writing, I just want to say, if we would have a new application form that would have things like this, like what are the conditions, then they would all be written out instead of some piece of paper with their name on it and what they're applying for and nothing else, except maybe the tax map reference number, which is what we've got now.
These are added.
Well, I know they're added, but when somebody, when somebody applies, sometimes they write a letter, and if you fish through the letter, you can figure out what they all are. And sometimes they're discussed at the planning commission, but that's what I'm saying. If we had an application form and a corresponding thing from the planning commission that's specifically incorporated by some reference to either the application or a letter or some other thing, then you would know instead of "as proposed by applicant," which I don't know what, and I don't remember either. I was at the meeting, but I don't remember what they were.
I think it is in these letters, actually.
Is there anything else from the board, any other questions?
I have some things. You said it's going to be properly insured. What do you mean by properly insured?
Um, well, an insurance company knows that it's going to be written out in this way, and therefore they're covering that. Because if you have a homeowner's policy, then it's different coverage.
So it's insured for you?
No, it's insured. They know that we are having paying guests coming in. That is a total. Actually, we had to go through hoops to find an insurance company that would cover that, understanding that we will be having guests and we'll be using as a hotel.
Would have liability as well as?
Exactly.
But liability, it's going to cover the guests, right? Or no, that's what I'm asking. I don't know what you mean when you say properly insured, for you or for them or for the neighbors? I don't know what you mean.
Right, right, right. We are informing our insurance company what use this building is going to be having. And they are ensuring us and the building, understanding what we're doing with it. We're not saying, "This is our home," and without telling them, "Have any paying guests." We're saying, "This is our home, but we're also using it as a tourist home. We have paying guests here. Do you understand that, and will you insure us for that?"
Right, so you're insured, but not the guests?
Right, right, right.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Not the guests and not the neighbors.
Right.
So in other words, if your, if one of your guests, you know, accidentally sets the house on fire, the insurance company not going to come to you and say, "Oh, you didn't tell us you were renting it out, so we're not paying the fire cost."
Exactly, exactly.
But if there's liability, that would also probably.
I'm not talking to you, Alex. I'm asking her.
Right, and we have liability and actually an extra umbrella.
Okay. And so does that cover the guests or not?
Okay, when you say cover the guests.
Well, if the guest tripped down the stairs, the guest burned up in the fire they just set, they cover it?
That, that covers that, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
Is there anything else?
Right, there is. How many guests?
It covers, let me just make sure I understand this. If somebody fell down the stairs, because they fell down the stairs.
Because they're a class.
Right. And they tried to sue us because they fell down our stairs for no fault of our phone or our laptop.
Right.
Then we are covered. They cannot sue us. There is also a certain, and I don't remember what the amount is, medical coverage for that.
For them.
Okay, for them.
Okay, right.
Right, okay, yes.
All right. That answers the insurance question. My other question, how many, up to how many, what's the total?
With five bedrooms and up to ten guests. One bedroom has a king, two have queens, and two.
It's going to be up to ten people.
Yeah.
And is there going to, there's not going to be anybody, you're, when this is happening, when this use is happening, you are not going to be there, right?
No.
I mean, are you moving away and it's just going to be vacant when, when the guests aren't there? Or are you going to be living there?
No, not going to be living there when the guests are there. That kind of.
Didn't you say, as I vaguely recall, you're moving to North Carolina or somewhere?
Right, right. We are not going to be there when the guests are there.
You're not going to be there, you're an in-between guest.
We might be.
You might.
We might be. I mean, I don't know what our schedule is.
But I mean, are you going to live there anymore? Is it going to be your permanent residence?
No, our permanent residence is North Carolina.
Okay.
Our business partner is on the farm. Our office manager will help run it. I will also run it by computer for the bookings. We have somebody who will be cleaning it. We have a neighbor across the street who will be on call in addition to Tammy, in addition to Rutger, who will be part of the call list if there are any problems. So we are, you know, we're not vacating the premises not to come back and not to come back.
Okay, when you say, you say your business partner is going to be there? Do they live on the farm?
Yeah, we have, we have a guest house, yeah.
Is that permitted? Or permitted? Because I have a permit, is what I'm asking.
It's, yeah.
When did you get that permit?
I mean, it's allowed.
It's okay, we don't have to get into all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, because the zoning ordinance says you can't permit a use if any part of it is in violation of the zoning ordinance.
So do you not have some authorization?
I don't know, I'm just asking. You say you have a guest house, and you have to have, if it's a guest house, it has its own kitchen and it's an independent living thing, then it's not a guest house.
When was the guest house built?
Prior to the original house, and we built.
When was the original house built?
I'm sorry, the guest house was the original house, and then we built, built our house in two thousand and one.
Did you get a permit to build it?
Yes, of course we did.
I mean, a permit from this board?
Like a building permit?
Yeah, of course we got a building permit.
How many acres is your property?
So I was asking the questions and having.
And we also went through, we asked if we, we asked permission for everything that we did on the farm, including could we have, you know, our own private office and basement?
And you can have one house for fifty acres on, and how many houses do you have now on this property?
Uh, two.
Two.
Well, you can't have two, more than one house on a tract of, on a single individual tract. Maybe it's on a different tract of land.
No, we were allowed to have house, guest house. We went through that whole process. When we got the building permit for our house in two thousand and, well, we finished building it in two thousand and two. I think we got the first building permit in two thousand and one. And I talked to Von Fraser, I talked to Richie Burke, I talked to the other lady at the planning, at the building office for permits. We talked to John McCarthy. I mean, we.
You know, I'm just asking you, where's the permit for it? Because if you don't have a permit, it's not a permitted use by right. You can't have more than one.
Why are you getting into this?
Because if it's, well, because if it's illegal use that's part of this, she said that the manager is going to be living there.
He's not a manager.
Or a business partner, whatever. Somebody else is living on the thing if it's not in accordance with the zoning ordinance, and that's a condition of this.
Is there a reason to, is there a reason to presuppose that they don't have a proper permit?
I'm not presupposing anything, I'm just asking the question.
It seems you are presupposing.
I think if you look in the book in two thousand and one, when we applied for this, that you will find it.
It's not up to me to look in the book. It's up to the zoning administrator when they take in the application to make sure all that's in there.
Okay, can we stop this line of questioning? Does you have anything else?
Well, my question is, they, they live there full-time? The, this manager?
Our, our business partner.
And how far away from the main house is that now?
About a hundred and fifty feet.
Okay, so they're going to be basically right on top of it. Okay. How many acres is the whole thing?
Two hundred and twenty-two. And everything is right in the middle. You can see from the picture, which is somewhere, no.
And this comes out on the Viewtown Road or six eleven? What's the entrance to there?
Waterford.
What was that?
Uh, it's, um.
Well, it goes down to Culpeper.
Goes towards Drickseyville, go off the road, six eleven.
Right, six eleven.
Past the northern. Okay.
Okay, I have other more questions.
Is there, is there anything else? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this application? Yes? If you could identify yourself. And do you have information specific to this application?
Um, yes.
I'm going to swear in your name.
Okay.
Do you swear and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you identify yourself?
My name is Karen Hunt. I lived at five five four Viewtown Road. I am an adjacent property owner behind Berkeley. I'll say, first of all, that Berkeley, I want to support Berkeley in her tourist home application. I and others have had previous concerns with a couple of the proposals that she's had, this being one in the wedding venue, which is an issue tonight, being heard. She has been gracious and forthright and has gone to great lengths to reach out to her neighbors. She's invited us to the property. She has sent letters, you know, explaining what they will and will not do. She has and continues to genuinely listen to what our concerns have been and to work with us to come up with solutions to them. She has demonstrated and continues to say that she will be accessible and open to contact and conversation to address and resolve any conflicts that might arise in the course of this being used as a tourist home. And I have no reason to doubt her. Her actions speak for themselves. In my experience, it's rare to have an applicant reach out to the extent that she has, to sincerely work with her neighbors and, you know, address their concerns and build their trust. I do have a number of issues and concerns with the way the county has handled this application, but I am not going to speak to that tonight. I will address that in a different venue, different forum. Berkeley has had enough issues with the way this has been handled. I do not want to add to it and make things any more frustrating or difficult for her than they were. But I do have a number of issues with the county in the way this has been done. I would ask, like to ask though, to hear what the BZA can do to perhaps ensure that this special use tourist home permit, if it transfers to someone else in the future, who may not be so sincere and approachable as Berkeley about the conditions and the promises she's made, what you can do to make sure that the things she has agreed to and the way that she handles and works with us, that if that goes to someone who isn't as nice and approachable, how you will be protected. If you, I have, I'm a very good note taker. I have notes of the planning condition, conditions that were agreed to if you do not have them here and you would like me to read for my notes.
Does that make you helpful?
Thank you, they'll hire you.
Well.
And I did try to call.
And I tried to call, and I tried to call you back. I can tell you, she has said, "No ETVs, no fireworks. The farm office will be occupied during the week. She plans on returning every four to six weeks to the property. The cutoff, that was on something else. Neighbor, close friend will be taking care. She has given us her home number, her cell number, the contact information for the other people who are close by so that if there was an issue, noise, or something that we knew was not supposed to be happening, she has given us multiple ways to say, "Hey, got a problem here," and that she would be right on it. She talked about the lights. She invited us out. She showed where things would be and how we would, you know, alleviated a lot of concerns as to how we would be impacted so that, she has said the conditions would convey with the property if they were to sell it. She had agreed to, any violations would be revocable for the permit. She went out of her way, really. Chris Burke agreed with the general consensus of the welfare of neighbors and to minimize the impact. She's talked about noise. She went to great lengths. Great lengths to work with us.
Okay. So do you oppose it if the conditions are put on, or do you support it if the conditions?
I support it if the conditions are put on, and Berkeley has told us that she has, that she's totally fine with that.
So basically, the conditions that she offered, you are fine with?
Do you think that it should be reviewed after a certain period of time? I mean, a year or two years or something like that?
I think what she's saying is it should be reviewed when the property changes its hands. Make, is that right?
Honestly, I do not recall if we talked with her pretty about reviewing after a period of time. I do recall that other neighbors and I were very concerned that, okay, we can work with her, but what happens if the property changes hands? How are we assured then? And would it be reviewed? Would those conditions transferred and they would be binding so that if somebody else wasn't as nice and approachable and honest, that we would have recourse?
Right. Okay. I think that typically, if the, if the permit goes to the next owner, it's with all its conditions. There is not a change in that.
And I have listened to a lot of discussion tonight, and sometimes there's opinions, and I think it is important to make sure that they are written in a clear, concise way so that there is no confusion somewhere down the road. So Berkeley is fine with that, and I would ask that, you know, since there's been some confusion already demonstrated here, that we make it crystal clear. Is your back will pay roughly? If I, if I can be allowed to stand up a little bit, I'd really like to.
Okay, I'm sure.
Sorry, thank you.
Not at me.
About ten minutes ago. See, I'm just kidding.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? If you could identify yourself.
Bob Claus, five hundred Viewtown Road.
You're speaking about this?
I am also, yes.
And swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I so swear.
Okay.
We are also, I'm Karen's next door neighbor, so my, the back of my property butts on this property.
Are you, do you have a Hennec or a Culpeper?
Rappahannock. There's a little ten acre corner that's Culpeper. Everything else is in Rappahannock. I want to basically just kind of footstock everything Karen just went through, so I won't repeat it except for my highlights. Berkeley has gone out of her way to seek out and accommodate any reservations we may have about the use of the property, and has convinced us that this is probably the best future for this property. The alternative would be that instead of a two hundred and twenty acre plot to have somebody goofing off on, I'd have ten twenty-five acre plots to have ten people goofing off on. And I like this a lot. At the planning commission, I, my major concern was how do we codify the caveats? At the Planning Commission, I, my major concern was how do we codify the caveats that Berkeley has promised to offer us? No ATVs is a handy one. No fireworks, no permanent lights shining upwards and stuff. And it was not clear at the Planning Commission that there was any mechanism for recording the discussions that led to the recommendation for approval. And so I continue to have that reservation, not about Berkeley, but when one of her sons inherits and decides to hold rock concrete there, it's a grateful day. I'd just like the county to have a, to have an input on that. And with that, we thoroughly like the plan Berkeley has come up with and endorsed it. Thank you.
Okay, so I would just answer that to codify, it's simply a matter of listing the conditions. It looks like Karen's writing them down. Is that correct?
No, I'm just making general notes.
Oh, if you want to write the list down while we're talking.
No, we're not.
No.
I was just simply having a, so I was just having a question of why doesn't the county have a recording secretary here to do that? I'm happy, I'm happy to do it.
Well.
Okay.
We're looking for a secretary.
I'm just, you know. I'm just going to zip it.
Okay, so typically, it's not so many. Typically, it might be three or four.
I, I'm happy to write it down.
I think it's fine if she'll write them down.
Okay.
But you already wrote them down.
Well, she's making their list.
Should we, we got the list.
Well, why don't you just give her the list you already wrote?
It's fine, it's fine. She wants to do it.
All right, anybody else?
Why don't you read them out, so they're on the tape?
Yeah, that's what we're going to do.
Well, maybe it would be best if Berkeley would read them out.
Can I have a little sheet? A little sheet, actually.
Okay, just while, while, is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Do you, because I have to separate.
Am I allowed to?
Yeah, come on, come on.
Actually, if you can have.
No, if you cross that line.
No, you're fine.
So you have to separate it from the other, the other application. So this is pertaining to paying guests, no motorcycles, no ATVs.
Are you writing this down?
Sorry, she's reading it.
Yeah, I was reading it.
We just need a list.
And I'm saying it so that it's on the recording, right?
Okay.
No added upward facing lighting affecting the dark skies.
No, you want no motorcycles.
Yeah, no motorcycles, you step that. For ATVs, or to ATVs.
In the house or outside?
Both. Outside, no fireworks, right, no fireworks. And what else? I don't, I think everything else is pertaining to the other one again.
Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, so that's where some of the confusion comes in.
About the phone.
No ATVs, the fireworks.
You mentioned the farm office.
Farm office is occupied during the week. We will return to the property.
Every four to six.
Every four to six weeks to check on it. We will have somebody, that's that, right. We'll have somebody, a list of people that are taking care, right. And we'll have a list of phone contacts that can be always accessible if there are any concerns, and if there are any concerns, you all will call us.
No, no light in apartments, right. Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, so do we have a list now?
Yes, we do. And for fireworks, I would say, it doesn't count, that's a little, yeah, it's like strictly things that are fireworks.
I think we were going to, we were going to do, yeah, and then there was the, you've got the ATVs, and then there was something to address, more, you just call.
Right.
Always, always in generals.
Yeah, no, like, no loud lights at night.
And then the contact information is provided.
Yeah, and then contact.
And then some of the other stuff applied to be listed.
Yeah, so we can't really include that.
So this is a list right here on this line? Okay. Okay, thank you.
You may withdraw.
Okay. Is it, Chris, did you want to speak? If you could identify yourself.
I'm Chris Parrish in the Baltimore district. And I just want to say that I've had a couple of conversations with Speedy Rogers, who is, I believe, the closest budding neighbor in Culpeper County. And he's a neighbor of this application. He's voted up to me a couple of times. I've told him I don't have a vote on this one, but, you know, I'm ready to test on his, his wishes.
Okay. Clear.
Yes. My comments are general and specific as to special use permits. I'm a county resident and taxpayer. George Sonnet, the A.D., Harris Hall Road. I don't think I need to be sworn in.
Okay, your job.
Right. All right, so, so I've been in the county for a while, and I haven't paid close attention to local issues, so shame on me, until the DOD application came up for a tourist home, which was two driveways from me. And anyway, several things struck me as being very odd about the tourist home approval process in the county zoning ordinance. First, the standards seem to be basically nonexistent. There's a definition of tourist home, which if it doesn't explicitly say it, it implies that you need to live there. You must live there before, so that it's a home before it can be a tourist home. I'm sure, I don't, I misplaced the definition, but I'm sure you have it there. But let me, but, so then the second thing, area that concerns me was, it struck me as kind of odd that the BZA would be the body, the administrative body, to rule on special use permits. So I thought, okay, well, let's check state law. And state law, first, the definition. There's, there's only one definition in state law, and I hope I find it. Special exception, this is 15.2201, the definition section. Special exception, quote unquote, means a special use that is not a use, that is a use not permitted in a particular district except by a special use permit granted under the provisions of this chapter and by any zoning ordinance is adopted herewith. Okay? There is no separate definition of special use permit. It's incorporated in that state definition of special exception.
Right, and it's also in our zoning ordinance.
And looking at the county zoning ordinance, well, first, let me say that 15.2286 of the state code does allow for a zoning ordinance to provide for the granting of special exceptions. Okay, it says may. So that can be in the zoning ordinance. You don't have to. Now, that's, I understand that's not for this body to decide. That's for the Board of Supervisors with the advice of the Planning Commission to decide the language in the zoning ordinance. But I do point out that there's not even a requirement in state law that, that there be special exceptions, i.e. special uses. All right, so looking at the county zoning law, there's so many ordinance. 170-47 E, special exceptions are issued by the Board of Supervisors, and I won't read on.
Well, can I, can I, just, I mean, I don't want to get into a big discussion with you, but I mean, I'll just, I know what question you're asking, and I'll answer it. And then you can move on to some other point if you like.
Uh-huh.
If you want to keep on.
Well, maybe, I guess maybe I'm not quite, let me just throw a couple more points in here.
Well, I'm going to answer this special exception, special use thing, because I know it's a matter of some confusion in some quarters. And then if I might.
Yes, please.
Well, you're, you're almost there. Section 17047 of the zoning ordinance talks about special use permits and special exception permits. But the, the ordinance provides that special exception permits are granted by the, and there's a section here, and I'm not sure it's in 47 or not, but there's a section that specifically says those terms are used interchangeably in the state law, which they are. I mean, just like what you read, first, it's entitled special exceptions, but then it starts talking about special permit uses. So the Board of Supervisors has reserved unto itself, and from what I understand, about to make the reservation even bigger, that they're going to issue certain special exception permits that are, that have a countywide impact. And others that have a more localized impact are granted, the authority to issue them is granted to this board. And that's completely in accordance with state law that allows for that. And that's, there's a provision in here, and I can't lay my hands on it right now because I don't have my computer. But it says the terms special use and special exception permits are interchangeable in state law, and in the county ordinance, the ones that are given by the BZA are called special use permits, and the ones granted by the Board of Supervisors are called special exception permits. So, but we have, I mean, it's sort of a, that's the distinction and that difference. Okay?
May I respond to that?
All right, yes. I mean, actually, I'm not sure if this is helping us for tonight.
Well, all right, well, let me cut to the chase. The board, this board, in my opinion, doesn't have the authority to act on special use permits. And I, and I believe this body should table or refuse to act on any of them until this issue is cleared up, because the Dillon Rule, and I'm sure you're all familiar with that, is very clear, and that is that if the power's not explicitly delegated to the locality, it doesn't have it, there's nothing in state law that allows Rappahannock County to divvy up the pie and say it's going to rule on special exceptions, which includes special use permits, and then say, but special use permits can be ruled on by the BZA. All right? Yeah, moving on specifically to approving tourist homes. As I said previously, the standards are basically, there aren't any standards. So from what I've seen, as in this application, the applicant doesn't even need to live in the house, not for a day. This applicant has admitted that.
That is true.
Not going to be there. That, that is contrary to the definition of tourist home.
Well, no, no, no.
They live there or very close, but tourist home is not.
The definition in here just says nothing about living in.
I'm saying it's either explicit or implied that it's first a home before it can be a tourist home. It's almost, I don't think I have the time to do it.
Well, I mean, but you're not really speaking to anything that we need to know.
Okay, but you asked, you gave me the floor.
No, I gave you the floor, but I, we're trying to make a decision on an application.
And I'm almost finished.
And we're not going to abandon, we've been giving special use permits for 30 years, well, 40 years, I don't know, 50 years. I don't think we're going to abandon that tonight.
Me, I agree, it says, section 17047 F, the Code of Virginia uses the terms special use and special exception interchangeably, however, for the purposes of this code, a special permit and a special, special exception are distinguished or violated, the question that is used is approved by the BZA or by the board, which are referred to as the issuing authorities.
Exactly right.
The other thing, right, the other thing you should look at is section 15.22308, which says what the powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals are.
And I've looked at that.
Okay, well, it specifically says you can issue special use permits if that is delegated down on the.
Well, you said, oh, you're against 15.2.
15.2, what did I say?
23, 2308 and 2309.
I have read everything that was just pointed.
Well, then, specifically saying.
That was just pointed out, and, and there's nothing in Virginia law that allows the locality to split it up. It says the locality can delegate special exceptions to the BZA or not, or.
But I think the terms are used interchangeably.
But the county zoning ordinance splits the baby.
That's right.
And there's nothing in state laws that allows that.
Okay.
Okay? Now, moving on.
Is that the last man?
It is.
Okay.
So there's basically no performance standards for tourist homes that I can determine, especially if this body's going to say that you don't have to even live there at all. So what that does is that just undermines the entire zoning ordinance. It blurs any distinction now between any commercial use, residential use. Let me, this will be my last point, which is, I constantly hear about, we need to keep our, our children in the county, right? And there's no housing. All right, so going down this path with these special use permits is going to deplete the market of housing for those that actually want to live here. And this body, the county, the Planning Commission, from what I've seen so far, is going down entirely the wrong path.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. What is the board's pleasure?
Well, Mr. Chairman, before you move on to the motion, I'd just like to say two things to Mr. Sonnet. One is, some of the points you made, in my opinion, are really not valid. I mean, that's what was done in 1985, and there are many counties that do that. Falkir County has the same system, where some of the special exception permits are granted to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and others are reserved to the board. And that's in a, that's what?
So it's very fascinating, yes, it's 17 years.
Right. So, so it's, it's, it's a practice that is done in many different jurisdictions, and is perfectly in accordance with state law, and numerous ones of them have been appealed to the Supreme Court for one reason or another, and that part of it's never been disputed. I would simply say to you that we're, as the board that we are, we have to act on the zoning ordinance that we've got, whether we like it or we don't like it, it's presumed to be valid until some court says it isn't valid. And so that's what we've got to work with. Last, but not least, I want to say the items that, some of the items that you brought up are pending and have been approved actually by the Planning Commission, and they're going to have a public hearing, I hope, next month. It's been, some, some of them were recommended by me about how to tighten up some of the standards for tourist homes. They've been, they've been discussed and approved, and all I have to do is go to a public hearing, and then they're going to go to the Board of Supervisors. But a lot of your comments, you should go to a Board of Supervisor meeting and address it to the Board of Supervisors, because they're the ones that have authority to enact or amend the zoning ordinance, not us. We're, we got the book, and like I used to say when I was zoning administrator, I don't make the law, I just enforces it.
Very good, I second that.
Well, there's a step forward, see?
Same, I second that. Very good.
All in favor?
I like that. Okay. Okay.
Now, can we get back to this one?
What is the board's pleasure? And I am going to make a suggestion here, which is, if there's any doubt about these conditions and what the Planning Commission meant when they said, as submitted by applicant or whatever it said, I don't mind sending this back to the Planning Commission just for them to review. I don't think that would be a problem.
You mean, tabling?
No, 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 just those conditions.
And see what was said.
Well, how are we going to do that and vote on it tonight?
Well, we're going to vote on it tonight, Dan.
That won't be the point of that.
We've predicated on getting a list of conditions from the Planning Commission?
That is.
Because we, it could be on video that they could go through to see what was said, but I think it's what she wrote down.
I don't think we're going to take a half hour tonight and write all these conditions down, but I think we can write a list of conditions, and I think the Planning Commission can look at it if they want to. I don't want it.
Well, how is that going to look? Will you grant the permit?
Yeah, but we've had, the Planning Commission has asked to review things before site plans, things of that nature. We can just run it by them, and they can look at it, and then we can verify it at our next meetings. And I think that killed a couple of words of long stuff.
That's why, in the beginning, we all sent it back to the Planning Commission.
That takes care of all of our notice issues.
So I'll make that motion. I move that we send it back to the Planning Commission to have a properly noticed hearing and set, let it out to the applicant and the neighbors, time to agree on the list and sign off on it, and then bring it back to us, and we have our public hearing, and then we'll agree.
You missed something from my suggestion.
Anyways, maybe I did, but that's. Anyways, maybe I did, but that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, okay, the other motion, which, I mean, I'm happy to make if that makes everybody happy.
Go ahead.
Okay. I move that we approve this application, and I, I move that we let the applicant submit to us a list of these conditions.
Which she has.
I want it to go before the Planning Commission again, is what I'm betting on. Okay.
For what?
Because we've got some question about the notice and the Planning Commission.
Well, how is that on the jury? If we've already acted, then, then we've acted. If we approve it, it's approved.
Okay, okay, I take that vote.
It's ex post facto.
Okay, I, I move that we approve this application with the conditions as described, which will be codified, and David can accept those conditions and verify that they are in fact what was agreed to tonight.
Well, no, we've got to do that before we vote on it.
Is there a second?
I will say that.
Okay, is there further discussion?
I would, I would propose, Mr. Chairman, that we add two things. One is a review of this in either one year or two years to see how it's going, or-
What about when it changes?
I was going to say that. Or when it, when or if it changes hands, whichever comes earlier. In other words, if it doesn't change hands, they, we have a review in one year, and then decide whether to review it again.
Maybe two years?
Two years.
Well, you've done that in the past, that's one thing.
Okay.
Because women, enough, the second thing is, and that would be, there would be another public hearing before this body, I don't think it has to go to the Planning Commission, just before BZA, will come back here. The second thing is, my concern about this, in addition to what I've already said, and this is without prejudice to what I said about the notice, I, I mean, I've already said it, I'm not going to repeat it, I think we're making a big mistake here. But, to go forward, but if we are going to go forward, I think in this case, and we have done it in some cases in the past, this, as I understand it from, which hasn't been up, I don't know what happened to our screens, but there used to be somewhere there was the tax map, and this has several pieces that make up your 200 and some odd acres, right? Well, it could be that one or more of those pieces, even after you're gone or something like that, could be sold off, and so, it could be on the same original tract that is approved, but it's not going to be buffered by 200 acres. It might, part of it might be subdivided or something like that. So, my, what I, what I think is, if there is any transfer of any of the lots, it would also have to come back for review.
Is that the same reason?
And last but not least, if they sell the whole thing to some other owner, I, I think that should terminate the permit. It should only be for these applicants, as long as they own the property and own the LLC that owns the property. The property's owned by an LLC, right? So, that, I mean, the LLC is technically the owner. And so, if that LLC, if more than, say, 50% or something like that changes ownership, the new owners would have to come in, again, not to start over, but they would have to come up for review before the body, so that all the neighbors, and it might be different neighbors at that point, it might be in 10 years. But we have some situations in the county, and I don't need to mention any names, I don't think, before this board, where somebody got a special use permit, and it's the same kind of a situation. Oh, it's good old, you know, Alex, or it's good old Chris, and everybody knows Chris, or everybody knows Alex, or everybody knows the good old, what he calls out there, they were making jams and jellies in their garage. And then they either die or move away and sell it to somebody that nobody knows, and they start doing something that nobody likes. And nobody can find a written list of conditions of what it was subject to. And so, I think if there's a change of ownership, I'm not saying they'd have to reapply, I'm saying they'd have to come in for a review.
Yeah, okay.
Certain period of time, if there's a change of ownership, or if there's a sale of any of the component parts.
Okay.
Those three things.
Okay, so, I can add that to, is everybody okay if I add that to my?
I'm in agreement with that. It's a lot of time, we've had a two-year review, we've had to transfer a property that ceases, and then because this is beta repurchase.
Can I ask a question? So, if we come in for review and everything's the same, or let's say we sell the property or our children take it over, and they want to do the exact same thing that we're doing on the exact same amount of property, and no parcels have been divvied up or whatever, then it would be continued, or it could be stopped again?
Well, I mean, we, we could say that if it was transferred within the family or something.
Well, I don't know, that might be a different board, because it might be in 10 years, and we might not, none of us might be here. The Board of Supervisors might change the zoning ordinance.
Well, then that's-
Hold on, hold on. What I'm just going to say is that it would be brought up for review if, at the end of two years, and if any parcel of the property is sold.
Or, not and, or.
I think what she's asking is, if it comes up for review, and the law has changed, or you're going to be knocked out of it.
Exactly.
No, it's not going to knock you out, it's just going to be reviewed.
That's what's going to be a review of-
Review, it's not terminated, it's just reviewed.
That's why I said, it's not going to be started over, it's going to just be a review. So, if the neighbors have concerns, like, well, they've been going and, you know, they've been doing whatever.
Having a lot of parties every weekend.
They've been doing something that we didn't think of back at the beginning, that's bothering.
I would say in the event that there were violations, it could be revoked.
Well, that's right, that's a different question.
That was in the plan, that was in the plan.
That's in the ordinance anyway, if they violate the conditions, it's subject to revocation.
That's another thing, so it could be revoked. And basically, if it's sold out of the family, or if any parcel is sold out of the family, then it would have to come back for a review.
If more, if the LLC, if the share, more than 50% of the LLC shares go out.
Okay, I'll add that. Okay, I'll add one. Okay. Is that, so that's my motion, and there, is there still a second to that?
I still second that.
Let's clarify, Mr. Chairman, exactly what we're adding here. Let me also give this back, because I'm a file-ist, because I'm here, maybe there's something else in there, let's verify this, so, what did you add? I forgot.
Okay, view in two years. It would be reviewed in two years.
Okay.
And that's not revoked, it's not reviewed.
Correct.
So, it would be brought, it would be brought before this board. Okay, and, and if-
And or.
And or, well, okay, and if it's sold in whole or in part, and the sale in part includes more than half of the LLC-
Outside the family.
Outside the family, then it would come up for review.
And, and the family agrees to abide by the same conditions?
Well, they're going to have to, they have to anyway.
The conditions are the conditions, they're not going to change.
And they're not going to use the copy of the conditions.
Yeah.
Okay. That's my motion.
Three things. It's the, it's the, if any more, if any of the tracts are sold, or, and or, if, if more than 50% of the LLC goes-
If it's sold in whole or in part, or if more than 50% of the LLC is sold outside of the family.
And the outside of the family applies to all of those conditions that he just-
I'll say yes.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Because the whole idea is to try to plan it for our family.
Okay. Okay.
I'm going to read this back.
Please.
Okay. The property is sold in whole or in part, or more than 50% of the LLC is sold outside of the family.
Should say, if any component tract of the property.
Component tract of the property. Any component tract sold in whole or in part, that it's more than 50%-
Outside of the family.
Outside of family.
Or, or more than 50% of the LLC.
That it comes up for review.
Review, that it will be reviewed.
That there's a permit, it just comes up for review.
And with the understanding that if you're in violation, sometimes people are in violation, it could be terminated, but it's probably not going to be terminated, but it could be other conditions involved.
Well, basically, the idea is that the review is to make sure that the conditions are being followed.
Well, and that there may not need to be more conditions. Like, if something came up that we could not foresee tonight, then there could be another condition happen. Is that not correct?
That's correct, because running drones or something out there.
Or some new technology could allow something that we don't know about, like Martian landings.
Yeah.
Yeah, put that in the next book.
I'm sorry, do you-
Martian landings.
No, no, if any component of the tract or property sold in whole or part outside of the family, or more than 50% sold outside of the LLC.
Of the LLC.
Of the LLC.
Okay.
Sold outside of the family.
Yeah, all of it is outside of the family.
Everything can be sold within or, or allocated within the family.
Well, more than 50% of the LLC, of the, sold outside of the, of the LLC sold outside of the family?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, by the way, we never really clarified that, and who, who owns the LLC now?
Uh, my husband and myself.
And you? That's it, there's no other members?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So, right now, it's 100%.
Okay, so, are we in a position to vote?
And I'm sorry, two years, so there was that, and then a two-year review?
Yes.
There's a two-year review, no matter what?
So, it's going to be no matter what, two years.
It's two years or sooner, if any of those things happens.
Okay, and that was it? And then the list?
I don't know, it has to be sooner, I mean, it doesn't-
Well, if we sell it before then, then that's-
They sell it next year, then-
Well, see, one of the things about the two years is, it takes a while to get up and run, and so you don't really have a history, especially with how many people- And, I mean, it could be that you have a new one, and you have no history of that new one.
We'll cross that reference.
Okay, okay, okay. Anyway, so, are we ready to vote?
I think so.
Okay, all in favor?
I-
I, how do you vote?
Well, without, without prejudice to my earlier statement, that I don't think we are on firm ground to have the hearing tonight, because it didn't one properly before the Planning Commission. With that reservation, I'll vote in favor.
Okay, thank you, David. Okay. See, that was-
Oh, very. Hey, look, her back's open enough.
Well, no, oh, I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is, and I just wanted to have, hopefully not a long discussion about legal opinions and our posting policy for on, for what we post online. And just as a matter of introduction, I would just say, recently, there's been a whole flurry of legal opinions generated. I inadvertently may have asked for one, I specifically asked for one, you may have inadvertently asked for one. There was, you had asked for one from the FOIA council, I forget where else these legal opinions have come from. But I just wanted to make sure that we're clear on exactly how we ask for legal opinions, and then I just also, in full disclosure, wanted to, and I, I don't have copies for everybody, but we'll make them available. There've been these couple of legal opinions that have been generated recently, and so... But basically, I think that the board should be the one to ask for legal opinions when we're talking about our county attorney generating legal opinions. I guess there's nothing we can do about individuals going elsewhere and getting opinions, and I think sometimes they're interesting. Sometimes they're not helpful, because, and I think in your case, it's happened, that they've been advocating a certain position, not really for the board's benefit, but for the board to support a position. And I think that would be my caveat with some of these legal opinions that are generated. And I think, I guess I'll do the legal opinions first. And one of the issues, and I don't think it was ever particularly disclosed, I don't know what the timing is, but you had a conflict of interest, or at least Art had a legal opinion, you had a conflict of interest on the Dodd case. And I think you had weighed in with massive amounts of legal information on that case, and I don't know if you realized what you were doing. But I think that was something where it wasn't appropriate for, to be asking for legal opinions or generating legal opinions. So, I would just throw that out. So, this was a memorandum that I requested from Art Goff about Mr. Conick's conflict of interest, and I'll make that, you know, available. I don't know exactly what the protocol was for publishing it. But then you had also, or somehow Art had offered an opinion about the legality of an amendment to the ordinance that affected the Dodd case again. And, you know, an opinion was made that basically caused the applicant to withdraw the application. And I think, I've checked into that opinion, and it wasn't really complete. And the issue at hand was that maybe the app, the amendment would have been voidable if it had been challenged within 30 days of when it was made, but it was not. And so, it was, in a couple of attorney's opinions, not voidable. And so, the legal opinion generator torpedoed someone's application at the last minute. And I think it may not have been complete. And I think that's, that's one of the dangers of generating these opinions kind of on the fly like this. And I think it's put an applicant at great disadvantage, which I think is too bad. And the other opinion that you had come up with, David had come up with, from the FOIA council, related to the notice on a couple of recent applications, on whether emails are sent out at an appropriate time. And there's remains question really about whether that is something that would void an application, or void a permit, or void an action of the board. And I think from my discussions with the very same FOIA attorney who generated your opinion, a couple of things came out. One of which is, FOIA is only about the place, time, and date of a meeting. It has nothing to do with any of these other notices, or how a notice is worded, or anything like that. It's the posting of the date, time, place of meetings, and how that is not a notice. A couple of meetings that you referred to, and I don't, I'm not sure I agree with redoing them, but I do have another opinion. But basically, it involved an email that may or may not be critical to the notice requirement. And I know that there's been a recent FOIA workshop, but I, when I am talking to this FOIA attorney, he did say there is no precedent for that type of problem causing a meeting to be called invalid or illegal, or whatever the problem was. And that the only way that that occurs is if a court of law makes a ruling. And that's saying, is the same with this amendment to the ordinance. It is not void to have an issue on its own, it has to be ruled voided. And in that case, it has to be done within 30 days. And this particular one was done 10 years ago. So, it is a-
Seven.
Seven, sorry, seven years, okay.
Content?
Um?
I'm sorry.
I'm just, I'm not-
You mentioned place, time, and date, I also thought content.
That's FOIA, FOIA. No, you can ask-
Are you entertaining comments?
No, not, no, I'm-
Did you, did this body hire her?
No, 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 you're okay.
So, certain people can speak enough?
No, I'm not interested right now.
So, I, you're not interested in what I want to say?
I'm speaking.
You're only interested in what certain people out here have to say?
I'm speaking, I'm going to open it up, and I'll hear, if you can keep it short, I'll hear what you have to say. But anyway, so, the FOIA issues, I think really you could look back over the past, since when did FOIA law come into being?
I don't know, not the board's legal counsel, so what, that's the county attorney.
He's not here. Okay. Well, anyway, since whenever-
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Thank you. Okay, since 1976, I think it's likely that a lot of these rules have not been followed, that those people were not really aware of them. Does that mean that every action taken since 1976- of them. Does that mean that every action taken since nineteen seventy-six can be voided because of some technicality? I don't know. I don't think that's the case. But I think it's a risky thing to just assume that everything is voided, or just piecemeal, go back and redo cases. So I would prefer to have some clarity on that, and I think possibly, we could get a different type of opinion, but I think there is no case law, and so a lot of the stuff has to be actually done in experience, not just by people's opinions or by speculation. And I think that's what we're doing. And we're putting a lot of people to a great disadvantage when we do that, and I'm not sure that it's helpful. So that's just my opinion. And the second thing, and I'll open it up for discussion, but the second thing, there's been a lot of interest in what do we put on board docs? And do you know what board docs is? Everyone, it's a, it's online, and it is where we put agenda, we put application packages, and things of this nature. But then, people also want to put opinions, objections, they want to put letters. I mean, and I don't know, and I think that's maybe something we need to get into a little further, what goes in, what is the, what is the protocol? And does, do we just have hundreds of letters come in, and who gets to go in and who doesn't? And I, and I, these are rhetorical questions, but I think they've come up lately because we've gotten this flurry of, we'll put this in and put that in, and it all gets, you know, to how do you treat everybody fairly with these opinions, letters, and all this kind of stuff? That, that is a question. So I know you've had some issues, David, about what should be put in, when it should be put in, and, I mean, I don't know the answer, but I think we should have some sort of policy about it.
I agree. So you've been talking for ten minutes, can you say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I'll try to address some of the things that you brought up. Uh, you're correct that Art Goff, at your request, issued an opinion, an opinion that I do not agree with, uh, that I had a conflict of interest because one of the neighbors in a recent application is a client of mine. And, uh, even though the matter has absolutely nothing to do with what the application was about, and so forth and so on. So, I've addressed that with Art, and I don't agree with his opinion, uh, but I am going to abide by it, and so I'm not going to answer or address any of the things that had to do with that particular application, uh, out of an abundance of caution. Uh, however, I do want to address, uh, in a general way, the, the issue that you've raised, and, uh, which is, if we have questions, like tonight, we had some questions about the applicable notice requirements, uh, things like that, before, if, if an application comes up and there's something before the meeting, it seems to me that there's two sides to it. The one side is, if there's really a technical problem, uh, with the application or the notice, I think it's, uh, something that we ought to deal with ahead of time because we inconvenience a lot of people to come to the meeting, and I've said this many times, that I think it's very unfair to people to make them come out to a meeting, and then when they get there, they find out that it's either not going to be heard that night, or it's stabled, or that kind of thing because of one of these technicalities. So on the one hand, there's an, an advantage to try and air that out and get it resolved before the meeting. On the other hand, I appreciate what you are saying, which is that, you know, the board should be the one to ask for these opinions. Now, one thing that's been discussed, and I thought the board supervisors had resolved it, but somehow, like a lot of things they resolved, like a month later, it got unresolved, and we talked about it too, with our prior, with the prior county administrator, and that was, to go to a system where when an application comes in, it's not going to be scheduled to be, to come to the planning commission, and then next, one week later to come here, because we had so many that were continued, and we, that we had already advertised, that people showed up, and should we have the hearing, should we kick the can down the road? So I thought the supervisors agreed, and I don't know what, I mean, Brenda, the interim administrator is here, David is here, he's the deputy county administrator, zoning administrator. I have to say, I don't have the cleanest idea, what is the policy now that the board set, what the board resolved, and we also discussed it here, to, when an application comes in for a, a special use, or a special exception permit, or any variance, that, uh, the first month that it comes in, or at the next cycle, the next month, it's going to go to the planning commission. And then, and only then, after they make their recommendation, will we advertise it for a public hearing, either here, or at the board supervisor level. In that way, in other words, stop doing these double ads where you have...
Stop. We have stopped that.
Okay, where you have, it's going to be at the whatever board, and then it's going to be at the planning commission, and, you know, bang, 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 then all of a sudden something, the wheels fall off at the planning commission because they want more information, or a revised site plan, or some question answered. I mean, how many have we had in the last six, a lot. So, that would solve a part of it, a big part of it. Uh, and then if there's questions that come up, you know, I, I have to say that, uh, from my own heart, and I'm not, you know, David's pretty new and so forth, so I'm, don't let this flash on you too much, but I've been there and done that. I think what's, one of the problems is that these applications, when they first come in, are not getting the level of scrutiny that they need before they're advertised or accepted for filing at all, when there's not an adequate site plan, when there's not this, when there's not that. And then it gets advertised, and the ball starts rolling down the hill, and then nobody, and then it's just like what you did tonight, and I appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Chairman. I don't necessarily agree with it, but I appreciate what you're doing. And that is, well, the people are here, and like what Mr. Bird said, I don't want to inconvenience them again, and so forth, so there's this, there's this kind of attitude, like, well, let's try to ban, put a Band-Aid on this, some problem, and then, uh, and then, uh, you know, not...
Are you still on the subject of opinions?
Yeah, I am.
You are, okay.
And I didn't interrupt you when you talked, so, and I didn't talk for as long as you yet, I'm watching it. So, my view is, it's the chairman's responsibility, in the first instance, to go down and sit with the clerk, the secretary, if it's going to be David or the zoning administrator, it's going to be somebody else, before they get in process, before it's accepted, and, and the advertisement is even put in, to look over the file, look at what's been submitted. I mean, just look at, tonight is a fine example, and I'm not being critical of anybody, they're all approved, or whatever happened, but a few months ago, we had one where they came in for a turf, they had a letter from the fire department that they could get fire equipment up and down the road. We had a letter from the health department that everything checked out, and that was all okay. And so, some months we have it, and other months, like tonight, we didn't have either one. We had a sort of something from the, from the health department about one of those family, but I don't know, I didn't see it. I, all those ducks should be in a row. If we had a good application form, like I said before, it would be, you'd have to file it, like you've got, you can't just put a check in the box. You have to have a letter from the fire department, you have to have a letter from the highway department, you have to have a letter from the, uh, let's say, health, whatever. All those three things, you have to have a letter, fire department, health department, and VDOT, and put it in there, otherwise, we're not advertising. You, the applicant, you've got to make up the list of who all the adjoining landowners are, and make sure that it's right. And then if it's not right, and we have to re-advertise it, guess who has to pay for it? You, not the county. Now, the county's, you know, it's several hundred dollars for all those ads. David, the county, I guess, or Brenda, but it's expensive. And the taxpayers wind up paying the bill, and that's not right either. And it says right as a state code that, that the applicant is responsible for giving that list. So if we would revise some of these things, and have a better form, I think we'd have a lot less of these technical questions. But I typically, I tend to agree with you that the board itself should be the one that requests, uh, an opinion if it's from the county attorney. But either the board should, or the county and, and the zoning administrator should be the one that requests it if it's got a question. Is this okay or not okay? Is this a permitted use, or which, whatever it may be. That's what should be done. This particular one tonight is another example where, and, and Fletcher's another example. I mean, we've had a rash of these, where somebody puts their name on the application form, but that, and then there's a deed attached to it, there's the property card from the tax office, and guess what? You've got two and sometimes three different names, one on every piece of paper, of who is the owner. And that's not right either. And that's simply a matter of somebody paying attention and vetting the thing before it comes up, and then you won't have to ask for legal opinions, except in very rare cases, I think. Now, that's, I think about that. About the FOIA thing, uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, you did a lovely job of basically muddying up the water. What happened, and I just want to review it really quickly. We came to this, we came to a meeting in, um, February, and I wrote a letter to the board the day before the meeting, and said, the meeting is not properly noticed. FOIA, you're right, requires the time, the date, and the place of the meeting, and has to be emailed to everybody on the list who requested it. And I'm on that list, and numerous other people that I know are on the list. Some days, we did in February or April, I'm not sure which one, the notice didn't come out till Monday, like one business day before the meeting. Another time the meeting, the notice was all goofed up. That was April, and it had the wrong month and so forth. That was addressed. And by the way, since we've been talking about it, here's the original which came in the mail, of the letter from the, uh, FOIA council. So I'd like to hand that down, have it put into the record of, of this month's meeting. Uh, all those things were addressed, and the FOIA, you were the one, you made a big issue out and said, oh no, we don't meet till seven o'clock, so that day of the week counts when we meet later in the day. And the FOIA council spent about two or three pages, including some case back to eighteen fifty, I think, that said, you don't count parts of a day. If it says a day, you don't count it. The day of the meeting doesn't count, whether the meeting's at seven AM or seventeen AM. So, I came through two of the meetings, I wrote a letter before the meeting. At the April meeting, I just brought it up and said, look, this notice got bollixed up. One day it had May, and one day it had April, and it didn't get straightened out till the day before the meeting on Tuesday. I think we might have a problem. And I'm not just concerned because of some, you know, whatever technicalities. We all are liable and responsible to enforce that law, whether we like it or not. Like I said before, and you seconded it, Mr. Chairman, we don't makes the law, we just enforces it. And we all took a note when we got on this board, in front of the circuit court clerk, to uphold the constitution and the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia, including the zoning ordinance and including FOIA. We're a public body. We have a responsibility to do the right thing. And if it inconveniences somebody, or it makes somebody look bad because they screwed up the notice, I'm sorry, that's just too bad. It really is. It's not personal, it's not a matter of animosity, it's a matter of following the law, and we have an obligation to do that. And if we don't do it, not only we're breaking the law, but also, the law has civil penalties in it. And I don't want to be, I, one of the questions that I asked the FOIA council was, if I come to a meeting and I point out that the notice wasn't properly given, am I committing a knowing and willful violation of the law to continue to participate in the meeting? And the FOIA council said, well, I don't know what the court might say, but I, if, since you're the one who pointed out the, the discrepancy and the failure to comply, probably the judge wouldn't find you. And I felt like writing back and saying, obviously, you're not from Rappahannock County, because I could see where the judge would say yuck on, you're the one who shouldn't know, you're the lawyer, you should've got up and left, so you I'm finding, and the rest of them, I'm letting go. I mean, I could see that happening just as easily. But the point is, not about, really about the fine, it's about, we ought to follow the law. And so, uh, the board overruled me all three times, and said, let's go ahead and have the meeting. So I did, especially, I did it after they had that FOIA workshop that you mentioned. I said, hey, there's an idea, I'll write to the FOIA council. They are set up by the general assembly, and they are tasked with doing exactly what I asked them to do, issuing advisory opinions, and telling you how to interpret it. And I agree with you that the, that the act, the sectioning question does not specifically, in that subsection, say you have to give three days notice on the, on the email notices. That was the question. And there, that's all they do down there. They got that staff lawyer and two others, I think, that's all they do is FOIA questions. That's their area of expertise, and that's their job according to state law by the general assembly, to do those interpretations. So I asked them, okay, you said one thing, I said another, Art said another thing, I, you know, whatever, it doesn't matter, that's their job. So I asked them for an opinion. I don't need the board's approval to do that, I'm a citizen of the Commonwealth, and I have the right to ask that question. I did it, and the answer came back. Now, you don't like the answer. You didn't like the answer. When I told you what the answer was, they agreed with me on every single point. Every single point, they agreed with what I said.
Is there going to be a resolution or a reason to keep on talking?
We have gone over and over and over this.
Wait, wait a minute. He talked for ten minutes, and I talked for ten minutes too.
Okay.
Well, at some point, we need, are, are you going to propose something?
I do propose something.
But hold on a second.
I do propose something. I propose that the three meetings that were addressed in the FOIA opinion should be redone.
Okay.
So redo those permits, and let those applicants come in. The fact of the matter is, not a single person opposed any of the permits. So, in, in ten minutes, we could have three more, do it, redo it, re-advertise it, and then it's all straightened out. All this business about going back to nineteen seventy-six, I don't know what happened back then, or in, in the middle. All I know is, those three particular meetings, it was brought up at the meeting, I brought it up in writing before each meeting, then I got the FOIA opinion. The guy said the meetings were not legal. And the Attorney General, the same one that we're doing in our settlement, we're asking for his opinion. A different Attorney General ruled that if you don't comply with FOIA, that whatever you do at the meeting is invalid.
Here's, here's the problem with the way we're getting these opinions, is we do not have any record of what was asked. There is nothing...
Yes, there is.
No. But we did not get anything. We do not know, and the FOIA attorney said, he recognizes this is from one side, is who was asking. It is not a general, it's not something that the board knows what was asked. Um, I'll get to it in a minute.
All right, let me address the last point, because you, you want to talk about board docs now or not?
I'll go ahead and do the board docs, if you can do it, sort of.
Well, I don't have much to say about that, except I agree with you, we ought to have a policy. And I don't think it's fair to put all the letters and everything else. I think the application ought to be on there, the exhibits that are filed with the application, and that's it.
Okay.
Because we've had some, like, what we didn't have it, but there was one for rezoning, and people were putting all kinds of emails and letters the day of the meeting, and then important stuff, like the letter from the VDOT, didn't get on the board docs. I do want to make one exception, and that is if there's a health department permit, or a letter from them, or the VDOT, or that's an issue, that should be on board docs, so everybody can see it. But, you know, what Joe Schmo or Harry homeowner next door, or three doors down, some of those things, they put on letters from people living in Washington, DC.
Okay.
And I don't think that's appropriate.
I agree with you. Yes.
Okay, well, then, then we ought to say what the policy is, but the other side of it is, we don't control board docs. The county administrator controls it.
Yeah, and they can do it.
There she is.
With our guide.
But I mean, the board of supervisors, she reports to them, not to us.
Okay, I think you're finished. Is there any other comments on the board, real quick? Okay.
With regard to that, um, issue about posting emails and that come from citizens, you don't have the staff to do it.
Right.
We cannot keep up with it. So, if you were to say, we're going to do it, and you missed one, then you've not done it. So, I'm just telling you...
But it goes in the file folder.
It goes in the file, and if we get it, but we can't really control...
Right.
You know, Mr. Citizen can send an email to the five of you, but we don't even get a copy of it. So if the county gets...
I haven't gotten one, ever.
If the county gets a copy of it, it goes in the file.
Right, it's in the file, and then it's summarized by...
But we cannot physically keep up the posting on board.
Yeah.
Well, it's in, it's in the ad, though, Alex. It's in the ad, it says, if you have written comments, then you're supposed to send them to the zoning office.
That's fine.
Doesn't say they're going on board docs.
Okay, that's fine.
One other thing I want to say, and that is, for some reason, in the last three or four months, they stopped giving us our packages of, of what...
They're putting them on board.
Well, I don't want to have to look on board docs, because sometimes it changes, and I want to get it in right, I don't want to get a piece of paper, like we used to do a week before the meeting, when the agenda comes out, with everything that's in there, so I can sit down and look at it.
Well, one thing that's nice about...
If you don't want it, fine, I do.
Hold on, us getting it off of board docs, because FOIA requires that that information be available to the general public when it becomes available to us.
It is available, the zoning laws.
No.
Yeah, they can go look at the file, that's all FOIA says, let them go look at the files.
Well, anyway, putting it on board docs does both at the same time.
Well, that's fine.
And, and I'd say, if we could print him up one, yeah, we'll print you up one.
Great.
Oh, you want to print one too? Okay, well, we can print them.
And mail them out, leave them in my box, like you always do.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna just let some public comment, um, you've had your say, I guess, that's all, that's all you have to say. Okay, if you can add something else.
Yeah, Page, Land, Jackson District. Uh, point number one on the email attachments, the issue was that some were put on, but not all of them, and they were one-sided. So if you go back and look at it, the ones in favor of it were put on the one, that's what the objection was.
Okay, okay.
So you're right. But let's get back to the problem. We wouldn't need this Band-Aid, you wouldn't need opinions, if the process wasn't so broken.
Sure.
I'm a lean six sigma certified engineer. This smells everywhere. Planning Commission, zoning office, administration, et, Board of Supervisors, you all, the process is broken. You only need to sit down, figure out exactly what it is that you want to do, have the, the county attorney at that point, check everything, make sure that process is legal, and then ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine-nine-nine percent of your problems would go away, and you wouldn't have to worry about who's gonna get a legal opinion.
Right.
You're getting a legal opinion because, because you're, you're messing up the process, the process is not defined, and then you're arguing, like tonight, forever and ever, about what's going on.
But who asked for the legal opinion, and we weren't supposed to.
Right. All, all you need to do is sit down as a group, the jury, the board, the planning commission, the administration, and figure out the process. You're, he makes some points about forms, you've made good points, you've all made good points. Let's go fix the process and stop all the bickering, all right? Please.
Good enough. Okay.
Thank you.
That was a bit concerning for this. I saw some of Desmond Dodd from Piedmont District. Some of my issues have been addressed, approved the board for addressing these issues, has some extensive things, but I'll summarize.
Excuse me, what'd you say?
Desmond Dodd.
Desmond Dodd. I think you knew that. Um, in any case, um, the application that I had before the, the board last week, last month, faced a bewildering set of circumstances, uh, in terms of what was disclosed to us and what was not disclosed to us before our, our application was supposed to come before the board. Certain documents related to my application were not made public, or they were made public just before the hearing was supposed to take place. Uh, it wasn't clear to me whether the legal opinions were binding or not binding, uh, and there were issues around a potential conflict of interest, which I have yet to fully understand. So, um, I'm trying to digest this. Um, I really want to promote the board putting in place certain practices and safeguards. I agree with many of the things that have been said here tonight. Um, but right now, my sense is that the processes that you have in place are subject to misunderstandings, the appearance of manipulation, and a lot worse. Um, I know that you all work very hard, uh, and value your public service, but I think that service would be even valued even more if the processes could be counted on by everyone in the county. Uh, I have some specific recommendations, I can give you them in writing, um, but I really hope that this discussion can lead to better processes by which we can feel, uh, as citizens of this county, that we're being treated fairly, uh, and that the process is not subject to manipulation, or some sort of mysterious process that we can't fully understand as an applicant. Thanks.
Karen.
I'm hearing a lot about something called board docs, which I know nothing about. I have one of those in the county that does not have an internet connection.
Thank you.
And, you know, not everybody, I do subscribe to the Rappahannock newspaper, and I get a hard copy delivered to me, and I try to read it in a timely manner, but not everybody does. And I, and I recognize that there's a lot of issues around notification, did people get notification, how did they get it, was it timely? I have issues I said I was not gonna raise, pending what you, you guys agree to, but I got no notice, and I have a number of issues which I, I will, I will discuss in our.
You haven't had a notice for this meeting either?
Um, no, none at all.
Oh, it was in the Rappahannock paper.
Oh, it was in the newspaper.
Well, only number one, you didn't get a notice.
I was not notified as an adjacent, I'm sorry, Berkeley, I was not notified as an adjacent property owner, as I was when, I raised that issue. We've had so much upheaval and confusion, we have lost tenured employees with so much knowledge, and, and I'm not trying to cast blame on people dropping balls, because, let's face it, that, you know, they're learned by the seat of their pants, undressed, and there aren't the people with the knowledge to teach them, because there's been a lot of animosity, and I'd like that to stop. I agree with you, let's stop the bickering. Can we all agree that, you know, we want to try to do the right thing and be successful? But I was, I was, received no notification, and I heard through the grapevine that apparently there was an opinion that there was no requirement to notify me by mail anymore, that that was just a nicety, and that that was obviously being discontinued. And then I hear here that it's the applicant's responsibility to give the county a list of the adjacent property owners that should be notified?
Well, that's.
Isn't that county's responsibility to figure out who should be notified on these applications?
Now, one thing, I just would like to just say that I think is applicable in this case, and I, and I apologize for, on behalf of forever, why this happened. But in this, and what is the code, twenty-two?
What are you talking about?
Hold on, hold on.
Twenty-two oh four-six?
Twenty-two, fifteen dash two, twenty-two oh four.
That's the notice section.
Yes, and one of the things about.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Fifteen point two, twenty-two oh four, and at the very end of it, you'll see that it says that they can make the applicant responsible for its providing.
Fifteen point two.
Fifty-two dash twenty-two oh four.
Equals enough, okay.
But, okay, but there is a section, I don't know what it is, at the bottom of section B, and I'm not saying this to be a smart aleck, but I do want to just read the smart aleck. Okay, good. A party's actual notice of or active participation in the proceedings for which the written notice provided by this section is required shall waive the right of that party to challenge the validity of the proceeding due to failure of the party to receive written notice required by this section.
In other words, if you show up, you waive notice?
Yeah, if you show up. In other words, that means somehow you knew, you knew about it. I mean, I don't know how that is, but you knew about it.
Because Berkeley sent me a letter.
Okay, well, whatever, whatever.
Because the applicant took the turn.
Or you saw it in the paper.
Or you saw it in the paper, or you tripped.
All it's, all it says is that if you, if you come to the meeting and you, and you do have actual notice, you can't complain that you didn't.
You can't say.
Well, you can complain, but you can't, you can't say, "Well, the whole, the whole permit was invalid, because they didn't give me the written notice."
So I have to keep going to.
No, 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 no.
It's like catch twenty-two.
And asking.
No, but you're.
If you think you're going crazy, it means you're sane, so you have to keep.
But what I'm saying is, and this is not in any impudent way, I'm just saying that you are here, you have prepared, you've given, you know, good.
Okay.
One day. Okay, but my point is.
What if I was asked to go out?
You have, you have gotten noted.
Then you could complain.
Then you could complain.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask the zoning administrator, or maybe I don't have to, because I, I would just like to make a motion right now, that as a matter of policy, I mean, I have to say, and I've discussed it with, with, uh, Mr. Lockaby, uh, and I've discussed it with Mike Brown, who's on the Board of Zoning Appeals in Falkir, and, and just maybe I'll answer some of your questions. The trouble is that section twenty-two oh four, it talks about what public notice you have to give in the, when the comprehensive plan is adopted, when the zoning or subdivision ordinances are adopted or amended, okay? And it's got a whole list of things, and or if there's a rezoning application. So then it has another subsection, if there's more than twenty-five lots, you only have to put it in the paper, that are affected by the rezoning. Then it says, another section, if there's less than twenty-five lots, or fewer than twenty-five lots, then you have to give each adjoining landowner written notice, their own separate notice. Now, all the other sections in the code, about special exception permits that Mr. Sonnet mentioned, about various sundry other processes, variances, special exception permits, appeals of the zoning administrator decision, there's three or four of them, they're all listed in separate sections, they all refer back to twenty-two oh four. But twenty-two oh four does the same thing about a variance. Twenty-two oh four does the same thing about which notice you give, about this one or that one. So it's kind of a, a mess. But the general, that's what we got from the General Assembly. So, my, what, that's the answer to your question, and that's why there's a little bit of confusion. Now, we, I don't know, well, I won't say we, when I was zoning administrator, that's a long time, for the last thirty-five years, to the best of my knowledge, most everything involves less, a special use permit involves less than twenty, it doesn't have twenty-five, more than twenty-five neighbors. So we've always mailed out the notices to every adjoining landowner, and the county as administrator, or the zoning administrator, has gone to the tax map, or it's the same as a zoning map, and looked at the map, and that's what the state code says, you can use that as the basis.
I'm mapped wrong, by the way.
Okay. A lot of the times, the map's not accurate, but that's what it says, because there isn't any other map. And that's how you identify who's the adjoining landowner, and you send them a notice, that's what we've always done. I don't know what they're doing now, but I make a motion right here and now, that every time we have a special use permit, or any of these things, that if it, unless it involves more than twenty-five neighbors, that we also mail the notice, and we mail it at least two weeks ahead of time, when the ad goes in the paper. That's my motion. And then we won't have this problem anymore.
But I thought that's the way it was done.
No.
Well, it was done when I was zoning administrator, McCarthy always did the same thing.
Inconsistently. Yeah, but being done inconsistently, and that was generating a lot of issues and concerns. Did we get the notice? Who did, who didn't? And in one sense, it isn't actually required.
Well, I don't agree with that. And there's, there's cases that say it is required, so, but let's not, let, what is wrong with just deciding right here and now, "We're gonna give everybody the notice"?
Yes.
What's wrong with that?
I don't know.
I don't either, so let's do it.
I think appearance is important.
I agree with you.
And showing the public that you value their input and that they're included in the process.
Or at least pretend that we value it.
As opposed to saying, "You used to do it, but guess what? You didn't get it, because you decided that it was a nicety, we're discontinuing it, but we're, we didn't bother to tell you."
All right, well, what I, what I move to do will, will take care of your point. So is there a second to my motion?
Um, I would agree, I would agree to put that on the agenda next month, but I think we want to talk and see about the, you know, how that's.
I feel we need to do a great deal more than that. What it seems to me is that we need to make up protocols for everything involving the Board of Zoning Appeals, the Planning Commission.
And that was supposed to be started last year.
And this would be part of that protocol.
Yeah.
So that, and it ought to all have been triggered when somebody comes in with an application, they get given a list of operations that they need to do, the private owner, and the zoning office gets a list of things that they have to do in terms of publishing, and, and that all ought to be codified in one or two, uh, documents, and then done, and it would seem to me to be so much easier and fail-safe.
It would be fair.
You know, of course.
Okay, Chris, you're right, and I support what you said a hundred percent, but when's it gonna get done?
Well, I, that's what we.
You know, look, I, I did all these silly amendments to the zoning ordinance last March of two thousand and sixteen, it's now August of two thousand and seventeen, about half or three-quarters of them were changed, fifteen point one to fifteen point two, and put it in a new code section, and they still haven't come up for a public hearing. So what you're talking about is going to take months. I've been trying to talk about the same thing, about the application form, since March of this year, we haven't got the first base, except I think tonight, we agreed to put it on for next month. So I renew my motion. Until we do all that, let's send everybody, all the adjoining landowners, a written notice in addition to putting it on the paper, just like I thought we always did anyway. That's my motion.
To answer you.
Until we do what you say, until that gets.
To answer you, David, what I would suggest, I will make a motion that all adjacent landowners be communicated with by mail, and that this motion is to be carried out by the zoning administrator?
I thought we could put that on the.
No, by just making the zoning, because there's supposed to be an affidavit in the file. There's supposed to be an affidavit of mailing and a list of to whom it was going, the form is there, I don't know what, this is such a mystery to everybody, you all have been on this board since I was a millman, since Moses. I'm the, I'm the new guy on the block, and this is the way we always did it, because this is required by state law, you have to have an affidavit of mailing in the file.
When I go back and, going back to look at, at former files, that's, that affidavit's been there, it's been the list of distribution.
They changed it recently. They've dropped it recently.
I guess so, but I, I, I don't know why.
Because Peter Luke wrote the opinion you're talking about.
No, 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 I can tell you why, simply because they were doing it as a convenience, as a courtesy.
It's not a courtesy, it's required by law.
Well, not in the cases, it's not clear.
It started about this kennel down in Amosville, that was, that was brought up when we, when I first came on the board, that there was a mistake in the, in the, uh, jump in the map, and so some people didn't get a notice, and that's when this opinion was issued, that, well, it's just a convenience for the people, and we really don't have to.
Okay, so it was done as a matter of convenience, and I.
But that's not true.
Well, I agree that that is a good thing to do.
I, I do too, and I'm surprised.
But, but it was also then creating more problems, because somebody's saying, "Oh, I didn't get this on a certain day, it wasn't postmarked a certain day," and then that becomes a whole nother set of issues when the thing was not required in the first place. And it was probably not the right reaction, but I think the reaction was, "Okay, well, we're not required to do it, it's getting us into trouble, let's stop doing it." And that's basically what happened.
Which actually means a matter of weeks.
Okay, okay, that's, I'm just telling you what I think.
Two, two weeks, I think one of the things I've experienced, and I consider this for myself personally, is notification or lack thereof, but when I received the notification with like, two days, with, I think, um, two weeks sounds good, I don't know, you know.
The reason, it's not a magic number, let me just tell you how it is done, and how it was always done.
But I think there needs to be adequate, adequate notice.
Well, listen, when the ad goes in the paper, the ad has to run for two weeks prior to the meeting.
Okay.
So what was always done was whatever you add, you see in the newspaper, obviously someone generates that on a regular piece of paper, and so when they took it down to the newspaper office, starting with Sandra Carright Brown, or starting before her, with Patty Alexander, they just made ten Xerox copies of it, put it in an envelope with all the neighbors' names on it, and send you the exact same ad that goes in the paper. Then it's done. It's done on the day when it goes to the newspaper to be published, so it goes on the Monday before the paper comes out, so it's more than two weeks. So it goes on the Monday before the paper comes out, so it's more than two weeks. And that's what was always done, and it only stopped being done for the same exact reason, as always. Somebody screwed it up, and rather than just say, "Oh, we screwed it up." They made up some opinion that, "Well, we didn't really have to do it anyway, so it wasn't a screw-up." And that's baloney. It was baloney when it was written, and it's baloney now. It's required by state law.
Okay, now, I was gonna suggest, we do have this as an item on the agenda next month. Why don't we just do this next month? We don't have to do it at 9:35. Tonight, we still have another item on the agenda. And we still have, maybe somebody wants to speak.
Why don't we just say we're gonna do it until we pass something else? What is the big deal to do?
Okay, Chris, do you have--
Swear them in.
Yeah, my consensus, that Mr. Vanlonz got the idea that he needs to send out these notices to all the neighboring landowners. And I think this is something that, if you'll get the picture by your consensus, which I think you already has tonight, and I'm pretty sure that's gonna happen in the future. Also, what we have here in the county is a tidal wave of Airbnbs. Now, anybody can go on the internet, put their house up for rent. The money is collected by Airbnb, it comes right to their bank account. None of the neighbors are notified, it just happens. And it's happening on all corners of this county at a rapid pace. And the county does not have the facility to keep track of it and keep up with it. And even if we try, I predict it would be a losing battle. The sad part is that we're not getting the food and lodging tax that we ought to be getting. And so I think the county should go ahead and try to get through to Airbnb to take out the 4% or whatever we charge for food and lodging tax, and send it to the county.
You're gonna bring that up at the Board of Supervisors?
Not at the-- Are you interrupting me, Dave?
I'm doing it.
I am. Well, it's irrelevant for what we're talking about.
No, this is a public comment.
No, it's not. It's okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just giving, as a citizen, I'm just giving an opinion.
What can we do?
You know what the end result's gonna be of this Airbnb tidal wave? This board is gonna be rendered unnecessary, because I predict there'll no longer be a DCA, because everything's gonna go through this internet stuff. And that's just my personal opinion. And I think the best we can do is get off Airbnb and get them to send us our food and lodging tax out of the money they collect.
It's a great idea. We're not gonna be able to keep track of it. It's a great idea, but we're just the Board of Zoning Appeals. What can we do? You don't pass the law, we just enforce it.
I'll call on you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just responding to that comment by Supervisor Parrish. At the Planning Commission meeting a couple of weeks ago regarding the DOD application, I provided documents that probably went right in the trash, I don't know. But one of those documents was a state statute that allows localities to create a registry for short-term rentals. So that, well, so that a lot of things happen. One, so everybody knows that the short-term rentals are happening. But addressing the tax issue, it allows the locality to collect those taxes. And if you, so if the locality adopts the registry, and somebody's operating a short-term rental, and they don't pay the-- The lodging tax, thank you. They're violating the law.
Criminal offense.
Thank you.
Okay.
So there's your solution, it's very simple.
Mr. Sonnet, we're just the Board of Zoning Appeals. This was brought up by the Commissioner of Revenue, who proposed that they adopt it at the Board of Supervisors, so go talk to Supervisor Parrish. Why they didn't do it yet.
I preface my earlier comments by acknowledging this body does not create or change the law.
Right.
I think--
I mean, I couldn't say-- I'm gonna say that that was obviously something that we considered as well, but we wanted to go the right way, and we wanted to apply the proper way and to pay our taxes the proper way, because I think that is important to do. But yes, you're right. I mean, there is pending legislation, I think that is going to be decided on next year. Right now, it's in a gray area, and there are a lot of people dancing in the gray area, as far as I understand.
But you're talking about--
Airbnb--
That's last year, and now it didn't get any passed, so that's how-- But the registry got passed instead, and that was passed this year and became effective July 1.
Airbnb attempted to take local control away on short-term rentals. That failed. The General Assembly explicitly put it in the hands of localities. They did that, and they also created this short-term rental registry option, but the locality has to act.
Okay, right.
And that's not a zoning thing, that's a registry thing. It has nothing to do with the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thanks. I guess--
It sounds like there is, there are points of agreement and consensus, and I'm sorry, I didn't get George's last name, it's written somewhere eight pages ago. But if he provided the county with that statute, and maybe they misplaced it, is it possible that you could provide the Board of Supervisors--
The Commissioner of Revenue already proposed it formally.
But that sounds very reasonable.
But the Commissioner of Revenue already proposed it to the Board of Supervisors in March or April or May or whenever, I don't know. Three or four, nothing, that's what happened, nothing.
So we need to talk--
Ask Mr. Parrish what happened.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, that's fine. Is it anybody else? Because I'm involved in closing the public here. Okay. Okay. The next item was--
The next item?
Yeah, the last item, there was, there's a legal bill that we just need to approve payment of the request to the supervisors. And it's, how much is it, $6,000? It's for all of the legal fees related to this conic fee.
It's not conic fee. It was an appeal of the Board of Zoning decision.
Okay, whatever that was.
Right.
$6,000 in the envelope?
$65.17.
$65.17. So what we need to do is just make a motion to request that the Board of Supervisors pay this, if they've agreed to pay already.